Special meeting to order at five thirty P M on Thursday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty one at five thirty P M. Members present are Brett, David, and Suzie. It's time to move on to pledge allegiance and prayer by Gillian Randall.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Hail Father, God, we come to you today, and I thank you for all the individuals in this room. I pray that you guide them and you have your hand upon them as they make decisions. I pray that you be with all those who are sick, God, guide us, and keep your edge of protection around us. We thank you and we give you all the glory and honor in your power, and we pray, amen.
Amen.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank Gillian.
Yes.
Have a good evening.
You guys have a wonderful evening as well.
And remember, you're welcome to stay.
I just don't want to. I'm not gonna be a burden. I just don't, I just don't want to burden ya. I just don't want to burden ya.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, this time we move on to the approval of the minutes from the August ninth, twenty twenty one meeting.
Are you changed?
No.
I like emotionally approve the previous minutes of August ninth, two thousand twenty one meeting. I'm not sure I'll do this, I need to abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay.
Can you second it, or does that work?
Hmm.
Have she asked to?
I have to.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I second that motion. Motion approved by David, seconded by Suzie, Brett abstained. Move on to approval of encumbrances.
You have to say.
You have to vote.
David, I'm sorry, David?
Yes.
And Suzie, yes, Brett?
Abstained.
Okay. Okay, this time approval of encumbrances. Thank you.
Okay, if you look at those sheets there real quick, we'll go through just a few. And we'll start with one sixty seven, one sixty eight on the first page. That's handbooks, our middle school and high school's handbooks are done by the student council and senior class, and then that's a fundraiser for them. So that money goes to those two organizations. One sixty nine is chairs and supplies for the ag department, and that comes out of his four twelve money. Quill, one seventy one is office supplies for the high school. And if you look on down through there, those paraprofessional fees, those are for paraprofessional fee that needed to be paid for them. If you look at one eighty two, that's coal plumbing. And we had to go into the baseball field, we were having problems with those, that sprinkler system blowing out because of the way it was glued. And so we went in from the water source down to the manifold where they branch off and go to the field and redid those is what that, what that expense is. One eighty seven, Norton and Company's high school humanities textbooks. On the next page, if you look at one ninety five, one ninety six, these are Chromebook chargers. And what we did on the larger amount, one ninety five, these chargers were bought with Title I funds. And then we bought twenty five chargers with general fund charges, that's that four seventy five amount. And the reason, one of the problems we had with our one to one on Chromebooks last year was students losing chargers. So we can't just keep supplying them. So we're supplying the first one, and then if they lose it, then they can buy one at Walmart or somewhere, or the, we bought twenty five with general fund money in order that if they wanted to buy one from us, we could sell them one of those at cost. On the bulk amount, the forty eight hundred, with Title I, we can't resell those items. So we bought twenty five with general fund in order to be able to do that for the students. Look on down, two oh six, two oh seven, this is funds for tech ed, for her four twelve money incentive money. Two eleven, these are, this is to add to our U S Cellular blanket P O for the year. And the reason we needed to do that is we, we put in and had pretty good assurance on an E rate emergency connectivity grant, and, but that grant will not come through until late October. So we needed to purchase our hotspots for this year. So he went ahead and ordered fifty with service for the year. And so what we went ahead and bought that will be reimbursed with this grant, they said they're about ninety percent sure we're gonna get it. So we would need some hotspots anyway, so instead of the grants for two hundred hotspots and then two hundred laptops slash Chromebooks. But we're gonna hold off on the rest of it wisely, I think, until that grant comes through. Two thirteen is Riverside Insights, that's testing materials for Miss Bell to test kids for special needs. And then if you look on the third page, you'll see just a list of employees. The next several pages, three, over to page four there is just the blanket P Os for payroll encumbrances for the year for certified employees. On page five, you'll see that's all Twenty First Century. This is payroll to pay out of that grant for those people providing services for the after-school program under the Twenty First Century grant. And then on child nutrition, we just have one. We had to replace an air unit at the middle school cafeteria, so we're, and that's a large unit, that's gonna be a twelve thousand dollar cost. So, but we're able to take that cost out of child nutrition. And then child, also on child nutrition, the last page, we had our payroll encumbrances, blanket encumbrances for cafeteria child nutrition staff for the year. And that's your ten boxes.
I like emotionally approve the, the general encumbrances and the child nutrition, child nutrition encumbrances.
I second. Question mark by Brett, seconded by David, to approve encumbrances as listed, Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
C C S. It's time to move on to other financial reports.
Okay, then we, we go up here, and you notice on this sheet, we kind of go over our balances for the month, at the end of the month. Balance in the general fund at the end of the month was one million nine hundred ninety eight thousand. We're still holding right there in the building fund right now at nine hundred and eighty six thousand. And then child nutrition at one twenty two eight eighteen. If you'll notice on here, and then I'll have it on another slide, during this month, we purchased our half a million dollar C D through Farmer's State. And that will be in this slide. We circled this here, so we purchased a half a million dollar C D at point seven percent for six months. So I think it's February or March when that matures. And then what we're looking at is the possibility of doing that on three-month cycle. So a six-month C D comes due every three months on a, on a cycle that way. Now, if we look at this sheet, remember, we kind of got into this starting on a new year. I was kind of thrown back when I first, Judy first handed me this, this sheet here, because if you look at salaries for this month, eight hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars, I don't know, that's a lot more than what we're, so I was looking for a paper sack. But then I forgot our retention stipend. So if you look, our regular salaries right here are at six hundred and seventy one thousand, seven hundred and twenty eight. Extra, you can see that's a lot more than usual, but that includes our, our stipend that we paid, and that was about a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. So that, I was relieved when I realized that that was in there. So that compares with last year at the same time, right here. And so we're up on that this year, a hundred and forty one thousand because of the retention stipend. So right now, overall, on salaries, we're up this year, a hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and five. If you take that retention stipend out of that equation, that puts this number right here at six hundred and, about fourteen thousand dollars more than the same time last year. So we're in a lot better shape than, than what it reads up there. And if you look down here, that payroll, I wanted us to keep up throughout this year because we're paying a lot of salaries out of grants that we just received, just received. If you remember, we're paying, we've got to spend twenty percent of S R three dealing with learning loss. So we're paying sixteen, or twenty four thousand, two hundred dollars out of S R three for salaries this month. School counselor, we received that counseling grant, so we're paying that much out of that grant in the salary to our L P C. And then our Twenty First Century, where last year, we'll kind of see as we go through the year, last year, all that after-school salary was extra, so it was in this category. It's contracted this year, so it'll be over in this category, so it adds to that, that amount. But you can see, if you take all of that grant money out, that's twenty four thousand that we added for three years. Most of those grants are for three years. So we'll need to keep an eye on that as we go throughout the year. And I've already talked to our principals that this spring, if we see this L P C is something that we need to stay, if we need to have an L P C in our, in our district, then we're gonna need to look at where we can pull back. Because these numbers last year, where we ended up at about eight point three nine in salaries, that's where with our decrease in enrollment, when all these grants disappeared, this is about where we need to be, where we were on payroll last year. We talk about bills. You see August bills were a hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and sixty four. That was last year, we had that incentive grant and all that, we, we spent a lot of it that month. So three hundred and twenty six thousand. We were ahead this year in bills, a hundred and fifty six thousand, four hundred and twenty nine dollars. So that puts us ahead in bills to this point, a hundred and sixty one thousand. So if you take this one sixty one and subtract the one forty, so for the year right now, we're ahead twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety five dollars. So even with giving the incentive grant, we're still money ahead so far this year. Keep in mind, in, probably looking in January when our new buses come in, so this is really twenty thousand dollars toward one of those new buses, is the way I look at it in my head. So that's kind of other financials.
Okay, we good, comments, questions? Okay, it's time to move on to public comment. A Board of Education invites public comment at this point in the regular meeting. Number one, comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy B E D dash R, no one present for that. Move on to presentation from Mr. April Williams from Commissary Tech's Partner School Service Report.
How are you?
Good, thank you. I should say thank you for allowing me to come again today, or this year. And so the numbers that you'll see this year are a little bit less than last year as far as enrollment. We did have, well, you guys know that we were dealing with COVID. And some of our classrooms in our trades and industrial buildings, they're very small. So if you do the map on what they suggest, we can only have ten in there. Well, welding is supposed to have eighteen, you know, auto is supposed to have sixteen, construction like fifteen. So what I tried to do is not overroll. I tried to just keep their numbers down. And then some parents were pulling them out and doing virtual and some things like that when COVID first hit. So some of these numbers are based on some of those things. But on the front page, this is our entire school, serving a hundred students in twenty, twenty, twenty twenty one. And then it lists the different programs that we have. Now, that's down because it, you know, it's normally up probably around a hundred and fifty. I can't remember the exact number last year, so it is down some, and that's to be expected. I wasn't putting more students in there, or having the counselors putting more students in the programs just because of the space in some of those programs. And so they could social distance the best they could, wear masks pretty much the whole year last year. And so this year, we've not done that, and students are much happier. So the programs that we have, I'll just go through those, automotive, construction, cosmetology, health careers, practical nursing, and welding, those are all on there. And then it, the, there's a total, and then the, the blue is adult students, and then the black is high school students. So adults can go both A M and P M on that. The construction program, which we had, I had thought about closing it just due to low enrollment, low placement numbers three years ago, but we didn't want to, we wanted to give it one more shot. So we did hire an instructor, and this would have been his fourth year. And right before school started, he notified me he wasn't coming back like the day or so before. So, you know, as a director, I'm like, okay, what am I gonna do, you know? I don't want to have a sub in there because it's injustice to the students. Because, you know, they're not, they're, that's not the reason they signed up to attend. So what we did is I put the program on hold for the first bit, and then I allowed the students from the schools to pick, if they did want another program, if there was another program, and what several of them did. Some of them decided they didn't want to, we'd let them sit in there, you know, a day or so and see if they liked it. But all in all, it worked out really good, and it was a pretty smooth transition. The board meeting on Tuesday, we made a decision to close the construction program. So right now, we don't have anything in that, that area. My thoughts are, this year is to put surveys out. So I'm gonna work with a marketing person, survey our Business Education Council, survey probably the ninth and tenth graders that might be interested in attending, and the community, the chamber, and see what program would be best for Stigler, Oklahoma, and our county. I've heard a lot of input from my admin, V E C counselor advisory is what it usually is called, or used to be called, in H V A C, plumbing, electrical, some of those type things. And one thing that I had thought about offering, and it would be relative to Commissary Electric, is there's only two High Line programs in the state. One's O S U I T, and one's at Pryor at a tech center. So I'm gonna look into that, see what the requirements are for that, because we do have Commissary, Cooks and Hales P S O. I don't know if it, you know, will work, but I'm gonna look into it and see what it takes to do that one too. So when I do send out surveys, I'll have all the facts, and I can present that when I, when I do at that time. So I'm gonna be doing some research on that program. I know a lot about the other ones, just because we have one of the campuses, and I'm familiar with them. That one I'm not familiar with, and it's a dangerous program, so it would be one that, you know, there's an age limit and things like that. So those are some of the ones we're looking at, a trades program to replace construction, hopefully in the twenty two, twenty three school year. So we'll be sending those surveys out, and we hope that you guys will give us input and feedback because we want it to be like a community effort to choose our program. So just a little bit about construction, so we're gonna be changing that. Because all of the programs have credentials, the only one that really didn't have a good credential or certification, they did have one, but no one recognized it. So I really would like to have something that has, it's tied to a certification, so when a student leaves there, they have a credential to go to work, or go into college, maybe work while they're in college, whatever they choose. So anyway, just wanted to share that real quick. At the bottom, it just talks about our numbers, completion and retentions, ninety point five percent, positive placement of seventy five point five. Placement is something we struggle with, and that's really kind of due to our area. There is not as many jobs in all of the programs that we have, so sometimes students that come to our programs, they need to venture out and move on to other towns and get jobs in other places, sometimes they don't want to. So that's why that, we struggle with that just because of the size of our town. We did have eighty four certificates received, and our average wage when we did all of our follow-ups, and those were based on nineteen twenty graduates, because we do, we're a year behind on that. Now, the numbers up here are on the twenty twenty one students, but the average wage was fifteen twenty six. And on the back, which is just specific to Stigler, we served forty seven students, and there was additional students in our alternative ed program. So the last several years, Stigler has won our, all, we call it Partner School Appreciation Month that we do in January, and we base it on the size of the high school versus how many students they have. Because it'd be hard to, you know, put like, you know, Kena or Kyoto up against Stigler. So we, we look at how many juniors and seniors they have, plus the percentage. And, and Stigler High School sends us a lot of students, and we do a lot of training. So we, I just wanted you to share that, we appreciate that partnership, because that's what we want to be, we want to be a partner. It's not a competition, it's a partnership and a, and extension of the, of the high school. So, and I'm gonna present all the, the boards, and I just wanted to share that because you guys have been first for almost every year for the last few years, so that's a good thing. And you can see down at the bottom how many we served, and it shows which ones are from, you know, your school, Stigler Schools, and then the adult students, and then the totals. So it kind of at the bottom says the same thing it did on the front. And on the third page, I did front and back just to say paper, but on the third page, it talks about our workforce and economic development. We actually have been on a standstill with that program for, since about December of two thousand nineteen. We had looked at rehiring that position, which it was business and industry services. But COVID hit, and so it wasn't the best time to do that because we weren't doing any training. So we put it on hold, we have hired a new person, and that is Shane Timmons is the person that we've hired. So he started in July, and so he's getting out in the community, putting on some training. He's done some training for Stigler Schools, a lot of our partner schools. And so he's new, you know, to this, so he's learning, but he's doing a really good job, very outgoing person.
Young.
Very young. But he is doing a really good job. So hopefully everyone will get to meet him at some point, because he'll be out in the community working on training of any kind that industry and business name. So it lists also the short-term classes that we had, even though it wasn't a hundred percent, because we didn't have a coordinator at the time, the number of short-term enrollments, clock hours, and contact hours. So it kind of has the definition on what that is. And then in the blue down there, just did you know Commissary Tech Tallahana, they have a auctioneering school. So they had that class, and, and, you know, that's on there just for information so that you know, because that's a rare thing to have too. So when you're a small town like Tallahana or Stigler, you kind of really want to specialize what you do so that you can pull people in from other counties, because we want to be the best that we are, but we also have to have population to do that. And at the bottom, it just has our Business Education Council for all of our programs at Stigler. We meet twice a year, and some, a lot of our Business Education Council members, they come and they service on our, we do mock interviews and things like that, they come and they do speaking about things for our health teachers, and so they are a good resource for our instructors and also for myself as we move forward. But this is for you guys to keep, and do y'all have any questions for me? I know you have logged on your gym now, but I just wanted to share information.
You know, just a comment, the high voltage school, those, those guys are in big demand. I mean, and we, and we've hired a bunch from O S U and Old Moby. So, you know, and they're really universally needed, so just, just a comment, I guess.
Well, and I'm glad to hear you say that, because I'm, I'm really thinking outside of the box with that one. And I know that like several from Stigler graduated and went.
I know, so I, I know three.
And then my cousin's husband, he, he's driving from Quentin to, you know, Old Moby, getting retrained because he was in the oil field. So I see that, and since it is so scarce, the training, that that might be like something we could do and do a little bit different, because we are surrounded by several electric co-ops in our area. So that may be something that we can do, and we've got that property back behind our school that we own. I don't really know what it entails, but, I mean, I'm sure they have to have training and polls, and so we've got the room too.
The training's scarce and the demand's high, and, and they're, you know, at least what I would consider high-paying jobs.
Yes.
We could even pull from Salasaw and Remington, all in that area.
Because no other tech center around except for the one in Pryor offer besides O S U I T. And I'm really good friends with the superintendent there, because we went to tech cap together, which is like a core tech training. And so I'm gonna make a trip up there, talk to him, get my facts, and so I have all the information. So I'm excited about that, if it works and it's good for our community, because, you know, I'm thinking that, trying to think outside the box, what we need, what you guys need, and that would be neat to have that here at Stigler. I mean, we have electrical, we have heat and air, O W O B A caustor, I mean, that's a common one. So I really would kind of like do something a little different.
And, you know, we hire interns, so like at the O S U Old Moby program, they're like in class for six or eight weeks, I don't know the exact times, and then they go to work for six to eight weeks. And so, you know, we hire interns, and we've done, we've done that ever since I've been here.
Aaron Michael just got, this, this, he's, he is, Aaron, uh, Plantiside?
Mm-hmm.
We did that.
So it would be really neat to offer that to our community and the surrounding too, so maybe we can make that happen.
But in our vocational magic, you know, men especially, if they want to stay in this area, that's a good, they understand that's a good career.
Yes, and with so many so close, I think that would work.
Yeah.
We can put some new students out.
That's a good idea.
Any other questions?
Keep up the good work.
Absolutely, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. I'm gonna leave some Commissary things right here for when you get there.
So she's still staying either?
No, I'm sure she'll want me to.
Yeah, I'm sure you don't want to.
I probably should go run, I'm doing a marathon or relay, so I probably should go run tonight, or I'm not gonna make it.
Yeah, you're welcome to sit in. Good for you.
John, John has to stay.
Thanks, thanks. I appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we move on to information items, superintendent's report.
Okay, been kind of keeping you up since last year on, on COVID numbers and kind of where we're at in the district. And we're, we kind of, we're wondering a couple of weeks ago, but at the grade school, we have three in quarantine, one isolated, so that's one positive test. Middle school, we have two in quarantine, one isolated. And then high school, we have none in quarantine and one isolated. So, and those numbers have gone way down, and starting to trend toward what we saw last year. And as the school year progressed, our personal numbers started settling out and going down. And for the life of me, I don't know why, but I'm attributed to, we keep things sanitized, and, you know, it's probably a good situation for them to be in. So COVID numbers, we have coming up on September twenty fourth. On that Friday, it'll be a week from tomorrow, we have a professional day slash virtual day. So the students will be on a virtual day, working virtually. Teachers will check in throughout the day, but we'll also use that as a professional day. And this has been very, very good for us, because we've spread those out throughout the school year, and it gives us kind of an equal time throughout the school year to have professional development. And we have all of our staff here next Friday. So we have, the first training is on our mosaic we talked about. And we have one group, our, our English, science, and math teachers, and a lot of your grade school teachers will be in mosaic. and we have, uh, one group, our, our English, science and math teachers and a lot of your grade school teachers will be in mosaic training. And they're, they're learning more about interim assessments. And so we're looking at, uh, maybe by January, that we can start providing on a quarterly basis at least, uh, feedback and data on where we're at, where our kids are at throughout the year. Uh, second group is a committee that'll spend that morning working on our A through F report card. And, uh, they're just researching, uh, all the elements of that and what can we do better on reporting, on our testing, everything involved in that. So that next fall, when that report card comes back around, that we make the best grade that we can. And we have a lady, a lady, uh, Dr. Rohr from the Oklahoma State Department that's coming down on that day to work with that committee. And then thirdly, we have CPI or Crisis Convention Institute Training. And Ms. Bush, Wanema Bush is trained in that. And she'll take the remainder of our staff and train them on restraint. How do you properly restrain children that are out of control and dealing with difficult situations? And that's going to pay dividends for us. If a teacher has to restrain a student and they've gone through that training, then that's a, a good thing to have. Our maintenance and custodial staff, we're splitting them up. Uh, I don't know if you heard, but we're going to host first time in, I think, since I've been here, the regional one act play contest for this area. So, uh, Ms. Parsons is beside herself, as you can imagine. But, uh, we're going to split up that custodial maintenance team on, on Friday. And part of them are going to be working in Autoboy and they're going to repaint the stage and do some work in there. The other half of that staff is going to work on the bridge between the high school gym. And every time we put down treated lumber, it's loaded up on us. So we're going to come down, put that composite down and try to remedy that problem. Our cafeteria staff, they'll be preparing, uh, meals for, uh, everyone else for that day. And we just asked our teachers and staff, what's your favorite meal that the cafeteria does? So we'll be serving, I thought it'd be steak fingers, mashed potatoes, but it's, uh, they voted for stew and the famous cinnamon rolls.
I thought that.
And I told, I told, uh, Missy today that that's all one word, stew and cinnamon rolls. It's all in one word here in Stigler. But we feel like that's going to be a great day for our people to get together and to learn. And, uh, and we're already looking at kind of what our focus is going to be on professional development for next year. So it's kind of a stair-step process. Last year, one of the things is, uh, a couple of them said, report things that you're doing professionally. So, uh, today, a couple of months ago, Nina and I were asked to present at a career tech, uh, workshop. And that was to be in Owasso today. Well, they told us a couple of weeks ago that we're going to do it virtually. So today I locked myself in this room and got set up. And so we presented at a, uh, a first-year teacher workshop for career tech this afternoon. On, uh, the topic was difficult conversations with students and parents. So these are all, I was there one time with a first-year teacher, young teacher and coach. And, uh, just, uh, that was kind of the topic breaking down, uh, whether it be counseling or discipline issues, whatever. So that was a good time today and it was honored to be able to do that. Football and softball seasons are well underway. And then also just like a regional one act play coming up, we also have our high school cheerleaders on their way to regional competition this Saturday. So, and that's at Stroud. And they go on, it's around about twelve thirty, I think, twelve forty-two or something like that. But that's coming up and we have a rich tradition in cheerleading, so we're looking forward to the outcome there. And, uh, just to sum up, we had, we had three great, uh, ceremonies at all three of our sites on September ten to commemorate, uh, September eleventh. And, uh, we teamed up with the American Legion and they were provided, each community was provided, believe this is correct, a memorial flag. And we were contacted and we set up and so we had a ceremony at the high school, for instance. And then at the end, they, uh, rose the ceremony of the, uh, their flag to go along with the American flag. So anytime we can promote this great country. And, uh, student council, which one of them's here tonight, did a great job in, in that presentation. So that's it for student council.
All right, it's time to move on to action topics. Action topic A, consideration of textbook committee for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Okay, and you have this list and, uh, this year is, uh, uh, K, pre-K through five, English Language Arts and then Computer Science, K through twelve. Uh, to put those two together, uh, we did receive additional funding this year as part of the legislation for textbooks. Our textbooks amount is just a little over a hundred thousand dollars this year compared to fifty-three or fifty-six last year. So, uh, that's a good thing. But we just want to present this group as our textbook committee for this year.
So make a motion, we approve the twenty-one twenty-two textbook committee as presented.
Question made by Brett, seconded by David to accept the list for the textbook committee for twenty twenty-one school year, Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, consideration of the district gifted talent advisory committee for the twenty-one twenty-two school year.
And this group will meet also next Friday afternoon, uh, to update, we, we, in dire need of an update on our gifted talented plan. So there'll be, uh, meeting for that, to update that plan. And then we'll present that, our G T plan for this year in the next quarter or week.
Motion to approve the twenty-one twenty-two gifted talent committee as presented.
So question made by Brett, seconded by David to accept the district's list of, uh, district gifted talented advisory committee for the twenty-one twenty-two school year, Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of approval of the ACT as the intended choice as the locally selected nationally recognized C C R A state assessment in place of the S A T.
Okay, by law, if we're going to use the ACT in lieu of the S A T, then we are required to get that approved by the board. So, uh, because the ACT is the more widely used test in this area of the country, uh, we're asking to be able to use the ACT in lieu of the S A T. That's what we've done last, we've been required to do that the last couple of years.
Oh, motion to approve, I think, a motion to approve, uh, using the ACT as the intended choice as a locally selected nationally recognized C C R A state assessment in place of the S A T.
Question made by, question made by David, seconded by Brett to approve the, um, ACT as the intended choice as a locally selected nationally recognized C C R A state assessment in place of the S A T. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, consideration of approval of F F A attending the cattle grading contest in Coppinville, Kansas on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Students will be transported by the school bus.
Okay, and they, if you remember, we approved this trip last year and they're requesting to go on that same trip last year. It's because everything was shut down and they found this trip and, and enjoyed it and did a good job. So they're requesting the same event this year.
Question. I make a motion, we approve the F F A attending cattle grading contest in Coppinville, Kansas on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Students will be transported by school bus.
Thank you.
Question made by David, seconded by Brett to approve the F F A to attend the cattle grading contest in Coppinville, Kansas on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Trans- uh, students will be transported by school bus. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of approval of the F F A attending the F F A National Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana on October twenty-sixth through thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Students will be transported by fourteen-passenger school minibus, also approval to have an F F A apparel fundraiser to finance this trip.
Okay, and he did a good job of explaining that and it's, it's been in Indianapolis several times in the past. So, uh, they're requesting authority to go on that trip.
What's the apparel fundraiser?
There, I know they're selling, uh, F F A t-shirts.
Oh, good, okay.
So make a motion, we approve the F F A attending the, the National Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana, October twenty-sixth through thirty-first. Uh, and also the F F A approval fundraiser, uh, the, uh, what was that?
Apparel.
Apparel fundraiser to finance the trip.
Question made by Brett, seconded by David to approve the F F A, um, attending the National Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana on October twenty-sixth through thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Students will be transported by the fourteen-passenger school minibus, also approve the apparel fundraiser for the, to finance the trip, Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic F, consideration of the estimate of needs for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Okay, I put this back up on the board and, uh, just to go over real quick, estimate needs, we do it every year at this time. And, uh, they'll build off of this and next month we'll bring our budget for the year. And I'm just going to start down here on building fund. And if you look at current expense, that's just basically how much revenue we're going to have available to spend. Uh, we could spend, we'll have the revenue to spend up to this amount, four million nine hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars in the building fund. So where that comes from is cash balance, we talked about it earlier. Right now in the building funds, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. Estimated, um, trying to keep on the same line, estimated miscellaneous revenue, it's three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. What that is, that's our S R two money. And that was one point two and some change, one two, point two something million. And we did that minus four hundred thousand of the S R two money. And that'll be over here, I'll show you in just a second. And then the S R three money, if you remember, we had to spend twenty percent on learning loss. So that is also the S R three money minus seven hundred thousand, which would account for that twenty percent. So with what, what is left in S R three and S R two, besides what we're going to put over here, I'll show in a minute, that total is three point seven million. So that allows us, and then down here, uh, they estimate on ad valorem, they give us ninety percent in the estimate of needs of what it's anticipated that we will raise this year, which won't start until after the first of the year. So if you take cash balance, uh, estimated miscellaneous revenue, S R funds, three point seven. And then what we are estimated, ninety percent of what we're estimated to bring in, in our ad valorem for building fund, that gives you this amount right here of four point nine. Now, on that, if you remember last year, uh, through legislation, they created, they started funding the Building Equalization Fund to bring every school district up to the state average in ad valorem going into the building fund. If what they project is true, that will about double this amount. So this, this amount could be a little bit larger. So, but that's what we have available to us this year in building fund. If you look over here on general fund, um, it says current expense, thirteen point four million, thirteen million, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's what we will have, it's estimated we'll have available with everything involved. So if you look down here, estimated miscellaneous revenue, and if you have any questions on what any of this is, I'll try to answer that. If you take estimated miscellaneous, it'd be ten million, twelve thousand dollars. And you'll see that number right up here on estimated miscellaneous revenue. Cash balance at the end of last year was two point one six two million. And then it's estimated that our ad valorem tax for general fund this year, this is ninety percent of the estimated, which is one point two four six million. So if you take those categories and add them up, that comes up to your current expense. I think that's a, I don't like the way that's worded. Because it sounds like that's how much you're going to spend, that's how much we're capable of spending or we'll have the revenue available on that. And then the same is, is true, uh, in child nutrition down here. So that's our estimate of needs for this year and they'll use that to build our budget off of that we'll bring to you next year.
So that total, like under the estimated miscellaneous revenue, the ten million, does that add up all that stuff or is that separate?
Yeah, that, that adds up all of this right here. And one big part of that, if you'll notice, right, other federal sources of revenue, one point three. Now that is, uh, the seven hundred thousand that were taken out of S R three for learning loss. And it's also what we did was out of S R two funds, instead of putting it all over here, we put four hundred thousand over here. So S R two and S R three, out of this, one point one million of it is S R two and S R three money. For learning loss, seven hundred thousand. And then we, we put four hundred thousand of S R two over here, just in case when we get our, the new school buses and other things, we don't need that cushion here. Next year, if we want, and it's still there, we can move it wherever we think we'll be.
Yeah, I know we talked about this a few months ago, but have we, has, has, has issues on the grant money, the S R money? Uh, will we be able to use, have we determined for sure if we can use some of that for capital improvements?
Yes, yes.
Because that is officially.
That's loosened up to where, uh, and that's kind of our, kind of our tentative plan. And we'll be talking about that in the near future. But, um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's my goal. And we'll be talking about that and get a consensus on that money. Uh, so that's the estimate of needs for this year. We'd like to have that approved.
Make a motion to approve twenty-one twenty-two estimate of needs as presented. I'll second.
Question made by Brett, seconded by David to approve the estimate of needs for the twenty-one twenty-two school year, Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic G, consideration to surplus nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty-nine Ford F three fifty pickup and use it to trade in towards the purchase of the two thousand five G M C fifteen hundred pickup in consideration to surplus, uh, nineteen ninety-two Chevrolet G M T four hundred pickup and use this trade in towards the purchase of two thousand seven G M C fifteen hundred pickup vehicles to be purchased from Brandon's Used Autos.
Okay, and that's just it. We would like to ask first of all to surplus this nineteen ninety-two Chevrolet pickup. And if you see these things rambling around, they usually just between sites, we don't let them get much further because we don't want to go retrieve them. So, uh, it's a white, has the utility, uh, bed on it with the compartments. And it's, it has transmission problems right now. And, uh, we're asking to surplus that and we'll trade it in on this, uh, both of these vehicles, we're asking to purchase our, uh, single cab. This one's a two thousand seven, uh, single cab work truck. And then the other one, if you see it around the nineteen eighty-nine Ford, it's a three fifty. Uh, it's a maroon color flatbed we have that the guys use and, uh.
Hat forever.
Exactly. I think we bought it three years before that. But, um, it's, uh, it's on its last leg and he's offered a seventeen fifty for both on trade-in, each one of them. And then, uh, it's down on paper to trade in for this. And then, uh, it's down on paper to trade in for this two thousand five. But, uh, both of these are good, clean pickups that we're asking to buy. And we'll just use them for the maintenance and custodial staff to, to have to, to do their workout of.
They have them, do they have them also? Yes, do you have the, the amended?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Back of these, it's, it's on the back of the estimate of needs, yeah, is it attached to those? The amended, has amended on that?
And you do have an, I asked Judy to, well, I asked Mr. Amos to, because the one that she uploaded to you had some arrows on it and the numbers in the wrong place. So, I had contacted, had he do another bill of sale. So, I'm sorry, that's your amended, uh, copy. We'd like to, uh, give that to you as an amended document to what you had uploaded. The numbers are all the same, he had just penciled in some things and I didn't think it looked official, so we had him redo.
Okay, so our motion does need to be made like it is on the agenda then?
Correct.
Is it so?
Uh-huh.
Make a motion that we surplus nineteen eighty-nine Ford F three fifty pickup and uses a trade-in towards the purchase of a two thousand five G M C fifteen hundred pickup. Um, and surplus nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-two Chevrolet G M T four hundred pickup and uses trades toward, trades towards the purchase of a two thousand seven G M C fifteen hundred pickup at the prices presented in the amended, uh,
Bill of sale.
Bill of sale from Brandon. From Brandon's Auto.
I'll second.
Okay. Question made by Brett, seconded by David to, um, uh, accept the surplus nineteen, uh, eighty-nine Ford F three fifty pickup and uses trade-in towards the purchase of two thousand five G M C fifteen hundred pickup and surplus the nineteen ninety-two Chevrolet G M T four hundred pickup and uses trade-in towards the purchase of the two thousand seven G M C fifteen hundred pickup vehicles to be purchased from Brandon's Used Auto, um, with the amended bill of sale. Uh, Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
That was a long one.
That sound like a repeat to me.
It always is. Okay. All right, at this time, we move on to executive session. I propose executive session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven B, one of the open meeting act, number one, discussion to appoint Lindy Hamlin as child nutrition director for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And number two, discussion to employ a child nutrition clerk, assistant treasurer, assistant boardman clerk effective September seventeen, twenty twenty-one for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Make a motion, we convene an executive session.
Second.
Question made by David, seconded by Brett to convene an executive session at six twenty-two P M. David?
I'm wrong, that is.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Motion made by David, seconded by Brett at six fifty-four P M to return the board to open session. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Members present during executive session were David Higgins, Brett Warren, Susan White. Um, Superintendent David Morgan was also present, no votes or emotions were made. Okay.
Are you ready? I make a motion, we approve, uh, we appoint, approve the appointment of Lindy Hamilton as child nutrition director for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I'll second.
Question made by Brett, seconded by David to appoint Lindy Hamlin as child nutrition director for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to approve the employment of Missy Jennings as a child nutrition clerk slash assistant treasurer slash assistant boardman clerk effective September seventeen, two thousand twenty-one for the remainder of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Second.
Question made by David, seconded by Brett to employ Missy Jennings as a child nutrition assistant treasurer and assistant boardman clerk effective September seventeen, twenty twenty-one for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Question made by David, seconded by Brett.
I didn't have anything about that one.
At six fifty-five P M to adjourn. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Next round, the board made.